Mayor Baker.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness.
Here.
Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmembers Berry.
Here.
Councilmember Curtis.
Present.
Councilmember Herbig.
Here.
Councilmember Danuski. Thank you.
I'm not really sure how to address you, Mrs. Gwynn. Anyway, if you would be so kind to lead us in the flag salute, I'd really appreciate it. Would you please lead us in the flag salute?
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. If there are no objections, the agenda will stand approved as written. We're changing things up a little bit tonight. We're going to do a couple of things out of order here. And we're going to go to citizen comments because we felt that it was important for you to speak. I would ask that this is a city council meeting and please address your comments, whatever, to the council. And with that, this is an opportunity for you to express your views on issues that are important to you and to the community, and we ask that you do your best to limit your comments to three minutes. People do work to do that, and there is a timer over there. And this is not a time for two-way dialogue. If answers are needed, city staff will provide those answers in writing to you in a timely period. So will the clerk please call the first person?
Carol Gillette.
Hi. I'm Carol Gillette, and my family and I have lived in Kenmore for the last 11 years.
Could you state your address, please?
7208 Northeast 190th Court.
Thank you.
I wish to speak tonight with regards to the proposed new school feeder pattern and how it affects my family. I don't support the decision to split the Kenmore Elementary Community between separate high schools. Before I get started, though, I'd like to thank both the North Shore School representatives for being here tonight and to the city council for keeping an open mind and considering the comments of its citizens. For perspective, when we moved from Alaska 11 years ago, out of all the communities we could have moved to, we chose our house in Kenmore for two simple reasons: the opportunity for our children to attend the academically rigorous Ingamore and to be near the proposed downtown area in Kenmore, which was supposed to be imminent. Now, as a parent of four children who will be affected by the proposal put forth by the EDTF, that's the Enrollment Demographic Task Force, and as PTA co-president at Kenmore Elementary, I have a vested interest in advocating for our little school. Personally, removing us from the Ingamore feeding pattern forces us to make an unwarranted change, and hurts our property value, and completely undermines the roots and network of friends that we have made here over the last 11 years. We have stayed loyal to Kenmore Elementary because we know there is more to a school than just rankings, and it's the diversity that Kenmore Elementary offers that appeals to us. We also wanted our kids to have the opportunity for them to go to high school with the same kids that they went to kindergarten with. Regardless of the academic parity between the two high schools, what Ingamore will have that Bothell will not is my children's best friends, who happen to have the advantage of living a few blocks west. I want to know that if Suzie sees my son doing something he shouldn't at school, that her mom knows me well enough to make that phone call. More importantly, I want to know that my son, who is highly functional on the autism spectrum, who would otherwise have a target on his back, is surrounded by his peers who have known him since kindergarten and who will watch his back for him. Quite simply, I've read through every piece publicly available information with regards to the new boundaries, and it still makes no sense to me to split up a cohort at the only school-wide Title I program in the district, especially since the decision seems unsupported by the school district's own data. I've already passed on my comments regarding the proposal to the school district, but I'd like to share my thoughts on it with you tonight. As you are probably aware, Kenmore Elementary has the most socially-economic-challenged and at-risk students in the district. Aside from splitting the school in general, not all the low-income, ESL, or otherwise at-risk Kenmore Elementary families are captured by the proposed Ingamore boundary. By allowing all of the Kenmore Elementary families to attend Ingamore, it improves social justice through truly equal education opportunities, regardless of race or socioeconomic status, since Ingamore is an academically more rigorous school, and it provides a strong and consistent system of family and community support from kindergarten through high school. Research has shown that ninth grade is a pivotal year that sets the stage for adjustment and achievement for students for their entire high school career. It has been demonstrated that students at risk of not graduating on time or dropping out feel significantly less connected to school than other students. Splitting a cohort is frowned upon because it basically undermines a student's connectivity with the school, it's alienating, and it destroys the very fibers of the networks and friendships that have been built. Given that Kenmore Elementary has the most at-risk students in the district, why undermine a student's success and social support unnecessarily? Second, the EDTF objective of keeping cohorts together and minimizing the transport, especially along 522, is inconsistent in how it's being applied to the various schools. For example, only two elementary schools in the district will be split up at high school, Crystal Springs and Kenmore Elementary. Yet, because keeping a cohort is so important, the task force has proposed that the district bus 40 kids just south of Beardsley Avenue across 522 and 405 to Woodmore, then to North Shore Middle School, then to Ingamore. That's 14 years of excessive busing across two highways, each three to four miles one way, when Bothell High School is a mile away. Yet it is perfectly acceptable to split the Kenmore Elementary cohort and keep them from attending their neighborhood high school. This leads me to my most relevant point. Based on the EDTF data, there appear to be enough spaces for the roughly 200 students at Kenmore Elementary who are being redirected to Bothell. Relative to the rest of the district, projected growth in this area is minimal. The district is projecting only 1,300 students to be enrolled at Ingamore in 2017, which means that there are about 558 more spots before they hit their ideal capacity. Artificially reducing enrollment at Ingamore by splitting up Kenmore Elementary just so many of those same students can waiver in under the IB program, maybe, is simply putting the burden of transportation on those families. A waiver into Ingamore is only meaningful if you can provide transport or live near a bus stop on a route that has space. So what do I want from my city council? I want you to advocate for your citizens, and I want you to write a letter of non-support to the district as the EDTF proposal now stands. I want you to probe through the data to ensure that every student in Kenmore is given a fair hand and the same educational opportunities as their classmate that lives across town or two blocks away. I want you to ensure that families who move to Kenmore so that their kids could attend Ingamore can still do so without having to rely on a waiver. I want you to see that this is unjust and unfair to our school community. Our community, it's worth noting, that is less likely to advocate for itself due to its socioeconomic diversity than another, more affluent and well-educated one might. I want you to recognize that it is just as unacceptable to split a cohort at Kenmore Elementary as it would be at Woodmore, or Morelands, or Arrowhead. The district is fully prepared for disgruntled parents, and they will do their best to try to convince us that Bothell High School is just as good as Ingamore. However, Ingamore sells houses in this area. It's what Kenmore identifies with as its high school. It's what we bought into, and it's where Kenmore kids need to go together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gillette.
Ann Anderson.
Hi, my name is Ann Anderson at 16304 81st Place Northeast. And it's an honor for me to be here. I've lived here now three years, but I've read your bios, and I like how you all live here and have a history here, and you've seen all the changes in Kenmore, and also how you have a vested interest in the future. I care a lot about Kenmore. I love Kenmore. I love the trees, how it's walkable, how it's bikeable, the parks. You know, I did a lot of research, and I brought my family here. But I need your help in protecting Kenmore trees. I planted 35 new trees in my yard, and so I've learned a lot about trees. And I walk around with my family, and we see the new developments. And I count trees. And I know the permit is six houses per acre, and that they need to replant 30 units per acre. But I found that I think we need to rethink what we count as trees, and I see a lot of emeralds, green arborvita, and that's A-R-B-O-R-V-I-T-A-E. And I can assume, okay, so they're a maximum of 12 to 15 feet and the width of three feet, and I can assume it's, so it's a privacy tree, and it's like a large bush. And I can assume it's more profit for the builder if they pick a cheaper tree and leave less green space. I've counted, and they're not replanting 30 new trees. And I'm asking if we should, if we could stop and raise the bar for the minimum green space and replacement tree quality. If we can set a standard of a tree that can stand the test of time, that's built to last, like that we want to see Kenmore in 100 years. So we need to set a higher standard for replacement trees, and I was hoping that you could help me in working with developers. And then also, I got a permit two weeks ago, and I responded to the city planner. It's the North Shore Ridge, PLP 2014-066. And I've been talking with the county, and they said it falls back on you if we overdevelop areas in landslide hazards or areas that are prone to erosion. So I have a colored map I printed out. So the area, the two-acre plot is in a landslide area, erosion-prone area. So if we can make sure we cross-check so that we can avoid landslides in the near future, in the next 100 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Anderson.
Would you like a copy of the map?
I would.
You can give it to the clerk.
Okay, thanks.
Eileen Hammer.
Eileen Hammer, 6511 Northeast 192nd Place here in Kenmore. I'm actually here tonight representing my daughter, who couldn't be here and asked me to come, so I have a letter written by her, if it's okay to read it to you. Dear City Council, my name is Fiona Hammer, and I'm in sixth grade at Kenmore Elementary. I can't be at the city council meeting tonight because I have lacrosse practice and homework. I do want you to know that I am concerned about the changes that may come to my school district in 2017. My class will be the first group to go to ninth grade in high school. With the current plan, I will not go to school with many of my close friends. We are all very surprised, and I am sending this letter tonight to make sure that the views of the students are heard. We want to stay together, like the majority of our peers in the school district. We are close-knit here in Kenmore, and that support matters. It is important to us. Splitting us up is not best for our success when we go to high school. Thank you for listening to the opinions of Kenmore Kids. From Fiona.
Thank you, Mrs. Hammer.
Jen Pearson.
Tell your daughter she did a fabulous job.
Jen Pearson.
Hi. I thought I was just signing in for the meeting. I didn't know I was going to speak.[846.72][846.72](Laughter).
We don't take attendance.
Sorry. So I moved here a couple of years ago.
So I need your name and address, please, for the record.
Oh, sorry, Jen Pearson, 7309 Northeast 204th Place. I moved here several years ago. One of the only reasons we looked at Kenmore was because of the high school, and we've fallen in love with the community because through the school it is such a great community. And we're disappointed in the fact that we are probably going to be split from a lot of the friends that my kids have made. So it's affecting us at just the community level. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson.
John and Fran Erskine.
Hi, Council. I'm Fran Erskine. This is my husband, John Erskine. We live at 7513 Northeast 195th Street. We've been living in Kenmore for 14 years. We moved here basically to have a community life in Kenmore, knowing that our children would go to Ingamore High School was very important to us. I am a CPA, and I find many members, CPA fellow CPAs that have gone to Ingamore and are quite successful, so I'm always very impressed with the graduates that go to the school. My daughter Kate is here today, and she is one of the cohorts. I can't speak as eloquently as Carol Gillette, but she is one of the children that also is very good friends with Carol's son, Miles, and they are a very tight-knit community, and it will be very difficult if eventually they do get split up. I would say that I wonder if the council has considered, or if the community has considered whether or not minorities have been accounted for. I've looked at the numbers, and it looks like Bothell has fewer minorities, but only by a small percentage. And I would be concerned, based upon the division of lines, which seems to be based upon a little bit of a difference in economic status in the community, that there would be more students of minority status going to a school that has less academic accolades than does Ingamore.
Thank you. I agree.
And I would also see if my daughter Kate would like to add anything to what I've said.
I'm just really upset that I won't be able to go to school.
Come up, Kate.
I didn't know I was going to talk, but I'm really upset that I'm not going to get to go to school with many of my friends, and I think it's kind of unfair. It's just, it's a little ridiculous that it's kind of, it's kind of unexpected, and we're all kind of just thinking that it's, it's kind of crazy. I don't think it's good, and that's really all I have to say.
Could you tell us your name?
My name is Kate Erskine.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Erskine.
Mark Miller.
My name is Mark Miller. I live at 7519 Northeast 204th Place, and I just wanted to add my voice to the course of parents who are raising kids. Excuse me. We're actually zoned for Shelton View currently, but under the new design, we're going to be relocated to Kenmore, so already my kids are going to end up going to two different elementary schools. I understand the need to adjust boundaries as the community grows, but splitting the Kenmore cohort as they go through the education process and splitting them in the pivotal years entering high school just seems ill-advised and doesn't seem to be supported by the research that's included in the EDTF documentation. So I just want to put my weight behind Carol's comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Rick Lawler.
Councilmembers, I live at 18551 63rd Avenue Northeast. I'm actually a neighbor of Alan Van Ness. I want to support Carol's.
Could you state your name, please?
Richard Lawler.
Thank you.
I want to support Carol's remarks. I also want the council members to think about the economics that could take place by separating these schools. Right now, I know a lot of individuals, and I'm not affected. Actually, my kids get to go to Ingamore. But I coach a soccer team that's going to be split in half. They're sitting in second grade right now. They'll be split right down the middle, and it's a shame. I don't know why this is taking place. I don't know if it's because it's a new high school, but it's going to impact a lot of individuals, and a lot of individuals in this community. It's going to impact our economics, and that's something that we should actually all bear in mind. Because I have no problem getting up and moving out of the community, and I know a lot of other members do, too. They'll move into different areas, which therefore could actually have an impact on how this community's economics play out. So I'd like to just support Carol's comments, and I'd like us, as a council member, to actually explore this further, to understand really the impacts that it has. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawler.
There's no one else signed up?
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Thank you for your comments. Mrs. Gillette, Mrs. Hammer, Ms. Pearson, Ms. Erskine, Mr. Miller, Mr. Lawler, thank you all for your comments on the schools tonight. We really appreciate hearing that. I think we also have some interest and concerns in this also. Mrs. Anderson, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, the planning commission is doing something with trees, tree ordinance issue, or am I?
Yeah, that's correct. It doesn't hit what she's talking about right on the head, but we'd be happy to meet with her and get her ideas and talk to her about the existing code.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you again for your comments. So, next item on the agenda is North Shore School District proposed boundary adjustments. Thank you guys very much for coming tonight. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for the invitation to be here tonight. I'm Larry Francois. I'm the superintendent of the North Shore School District. I want to just introduce some of the folks who are here with me this evening. At the far end is Katrina Rose. She is a Kenmore resident, I think familiar to many of you here, and she's also a member of our Enrollment Demographics Task Force, a citizen member of that committee, as well as the smaller subcommittee of the Enrollment Demographics Task Force that's done most of the heavy lifting around the proposed boundary plan. Next to her is Ryan Fujiwara, Executive Director, Support Services. Ryan will lead most of our presentation here in a moment. As you know, School Board President Janet Quinn, also a Kenmore resident, and Doug Wilson, who supports the Enrollment Demographic Task Force, and will be here doing tech support and anything else we may need him to do tonight. The, I want to say it was about 18 months ago, we were here, we had a joint session with the city council, and at that time, we were talking about our explosive enrollment growth that we were seeing in the north end of the district. We currently have about five elementary schools where we don't even have enough room for the kindergartners at those schools to attend there. They're being bused off to other schools, and at that time, we were gearing up for our bond measure that our community graciously supported last February, and we're now under construction for a new high school, a fourth comprehensive high school in the north end of the school district, North Creek. And that new high school was part of a three-legged plan. One was a new high school. The third, the second component was grade reconfiguration, moving our sixth graders up to middle school and our ninth graders up to high school, and the instructional benefits of that. And then the third leg were boundary adjustments. And so we're here tonight kind of talking about that third leg. So certainly understand the concerns around boundary adjustments. It would be almost disheartening if communities weren't upset about the prospects of potentially being moved to a different school community, because we work very hard to build community amongst all of our schools. We certainly understand the concerns that the council may have, as well as affected citizens. Our goal tonight is to really sort of paint the broader picture of what we're facing district-wide and how it may specifically impact Kenmore. And we've got a lot of information to share. We're going to move through it as quickly as we can, and we certainly welcome any questions that you may have along the way. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Ryan, I believe, who's going to lead the bulk of this part of the presentation.
Great, thank you.
Did it go to sleep, maybe?
If we can get the lamp on. There we go. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I think one of the things that we wanted to share is just the, thank you for the opportunity for sharing a little bit of our story. I think it's really important to understand some of the bigger challenges we have in the district.
Excuse me. Is your microphone turned on?
I believe.
Button needs to be up. Yeah.
Is the button up?
Yeah, the button's up. Yeah, okay.
All right. So a couple of things we just want to share with you a little bit is the context of North Shore. North Shore is somewhat unique with the number of cities and counties we have in our district, but also, more importantly, the urban growth boundary that crosses county. Wanted to share a little bit of what's happening out there in our district from a construction perspective, as far as some of our enrollment trends that we're starting to see, as well as our demographics. We'll also share a little bit of our current members and understand that the EDTF was really established in 2001, so we've been looking at data trends and making small adjustments over the last 14, 15 years. We'll also review a little bit of our consideration themes and assumptions. We'll share a little bit of our modeling, estimated impacts, and then our draft recommendations. So as I shared earlier, I think one of the things that's, one of the challenges that we have in North Shore is we're divided into two counties, King and Snohomish County, as you can see, across as the horizontal line. And then your vertical line, your vertical dotted line that's moving north and south is the urban growth boundaries. Now, we overlay on top of the counties our five cities. So this is sort of the five cities that we're incorporating in our district, as well as the unincorporated and unincorporated King and Snohomish Counties. So this is just sort of a rough timeline of when high schools were open, or some of our schools, as you can see, the '50s, Bothell High School, '60s, Ingamore High School. In the '70s, in the good old '70s, we didn't build a high school then. In the '80s, we built Woodinville High School, and the urban growth line was established in 1990, with our last school being built as Timbercrest Junior High in 1997. So one of the things that we tend to look at as part of our projections is birth forecast. And the data that we're showing you today is pretty relevant as far as what we continue to assess each year. So for your first 10 years, from 96 to 2005, if you look at your births, there is about 30,000 births, somewhat consistent. We had a little bit of boom somewhere in 2006 and 2013. And as you can see, the forecast for 2014 and beyond looks like it's going to continue to grow. We also know that over the last four years, regionally, all school districts has grown, and especially on the four or five corridor, or some of your major corridors. If you look at North Shore, we've grown roughly about 1,200 students in the last four years. That would be roughly about two and a half elementary schools. We also know that since 2006, we had a slight dip in the housing market, but as you can see, it's starting to grow a bit. We're not quite sure about 2013 as we look at the data, but that's an anomaly that we're seeing. What we're typically seeing today is really strong home sales. Also, what we know today is today, as of October 2014, we are at our peak of our head count, student head count. So as you can see, the district sort of grew in the early '90s, flattened out somewhere around 2000, did a little bit of a dip in late 2000, and then the last three or four years, we've continued to grow at a pretty good pace. We also know that the last four years has been our biggest enrollment as far as kindergarten students, and we know at some point they're going to be coming through the pipeline. So some of the short and midterms things that we've implemented just through EDTF, we've utilized all spaces that we currently have at the elementary level. Right now, we, I believe we've closed 16 of our 20 elementary schools. So no waivers, everything's locked down. The only place that you can really, if you want to waiver, is going to be East, which is our Cottage Lake, East Ridge schools. We also know that we've adjusted our waiver policies, that our waiver policies are now on a one-year basis, before they used to be based on a period of time. We also know that we had to move many of our programs out. So as Larry shared, in our north-end schools, some of our major programs, our kindergarten programs, are now being relocated at schools that has some capacity. programs are now being relocated at, um, schools that has some capacity. We've also capped full day kindergartens. We've moved existing portables out from some of our east-side schools into our sort of north-central corridor. And more importantly, um, over the last two and a half years, we've installed probably 40 portables, which is about two and a half to three elementary schools. The last thing we looked at is now looking at some leased space. And we're considering that as our primary center for three or four of our big schools that, um, we still need to find the space for our kindergarten programs. So a little bit of the projections. What we know today, and this is basically what's in the pipeline, again, we're just pulling the data from, um, the five jurisdictions and counties that we encompass, that, um, with multifamily homes, we know that we generate roughly 10 students per 100 homes. We have about 2,000 permits in the pipeline today. We also know that for our single-family homes, we have roughly just under 5,000 permits in the pipeline, and they generate somewhere around 50 students per 100 new homes. So just in the pipeline today, what we know, we're going to be expecting somewhere around 1,650 kids. This just illustrates where the development is, is growing in our district. As you can see, it's only west of the urban growth line, with the majority of our growth happening in the north end or the Snohomish portion of our district. What we've also tried to illustrate over the next six years is the, um, uh, the developments in each one of our elementary levels and what high schools they'll be feeding into. As you can see, in our Botha region, Fernwood, Crystal Springs, um, they're going to be very large as far as the capacity we have for single-family homes. We also know that in Inglemore, Morlins and Woodmore will also have a large contingent of new homes being built in that area, as well as in our Woodinville High School, um, Kokony will have a large contingency of homes being built. So this was some of the mid, so as we talked about, this was the short, the short and midterm capacity that we have implemented. Now we're sort of moving toward the longer, longer-term changes. Part of the longer-term changes is adjusting service areas, adjusting feeder patterns, potentially looking at new construction for, uh, of our North Creek High School, acquiring additional property as we continue to look at building permanent structures, and potentially looking at new construction in some of our sites we currently own. So let me share a little bit of the E D T F and some of the, the processes that we went through. So as you can see, I think, um, the E D T F is made up of both district and community reps. I think what's important in this is that, um, the terms of some of our community reps is three-plus years. So we have some, some folks in our community reps who's been part of our E D T F committee for the last six years. And so they have some type of history of what we've done, stop laughing, um, you know, definitely over a period of time. I think we have some reps that represent a wide, uh, our entire community. So we know we have reps from the Woodinville community, Inglemore community, and Botha community. We also know that we, um, have brought in some really good district support or consultants to, to share good data, demographics, consultants, et cetera, et cetera. Okay, so we feel like for us, this has been a, um, objective, trying to put a really good of objective people who can really sort through the data and, um, understand sort of what we are trying to do over this period of time. On top of that, we've created a subcommittee to really dive more into the details. And this subcommittee has probably put in over 50-plus hours, um, eating a lot of sugar to really look at what's the best way to sort through the data and, and how do we, how do we draw the lines? That's really the biggest difference. When the line's one mile wide, really easy decision. Now, I'll put the line behind someone's home and who goes where, that becomes more of a challenge. The other thing that I think is really important as we look at some of the consideration and themes that we had to use in the subcommittee, you know, we really had to, um, identify some guiding principles for us as we looked at, um, how were we going to, uh, draw the boundaries and who goes where. And one of the things that the E D T F really looked at was sort of four key considerations. We looked at the instructional considerations, the demographic considerations, operational and geographic. And each one of these are defined a little bit more in detail that we can share with you. On top of that, we also did a community survey and sent this information out to the community and said, you know, what are we really missing? We need some really good guidelines for us to, and how we're going to draw the lines and who goes where. And these are some of the themes that, um, came back from the community survey. In addition, I think one of the things that we had to do is we had to make a few assumptions as we look at some long-term planning. These are our static assumptions that we've made up there, as well as some of our dynamic assumptions. Yes?
Thank you, Ryan. I did have a question because my understanding was that there is a possibility of changing the current school start times. I don't know where that is, and I noticed that was one of the assumptions.
Yeah. So I think when we were looking at this, so we've been working on this probably for the last 18 months. And really, um, at that time, we had, we didn't know what the decision from the board was, so we had to make an assumption
Sure.
That the start times would stay static. Where are you, Doug?
So if I can just back up a little bit and just interject, I think in your packets, but for some reason not in the slide, is slide 20, which I think is a pretty critical slide. And I apologize that it's not in the presentation, but, uh, it really talks about from the standpoint of drawing the boundaries, um, some of the primary challenges that we face. So at the elementary level and at the junior high or middle school level, the challenge is really shifting population density from the north to the south and the east. Whereas at the high school level, we're populating a school that's being built in the north end of the district, so the challenge is a bit reversed. We're trying to move population, um, or cut boundaries to move population up into the north end of the district and trying to do that in a way where we maintain as much continuity from elementary to middle school to high school as we can. So it's a, it's a, um, it's a great puzzle to try and, and sort through and figure out how to shift one group of students to a certain direction and shift another group of students a different direction without causing too much disruption in the process.
I think the other challenge is, as we talked about, sorry about that. One of the other challenges that we, we knew we would face is how do you fit six middle schools into four high schools? And more importantly, how do you sustain that? We know that one, one middle school will not be able to sustain a high school. So what's the natural split of that? And that, and we knew that from a subcommittee, that would be one of the challenges that we would be having. And we'll show some of that, um, what it looks like today versus what we're proposing. Okay? I think besides the considerations and themes and assumptions, I think the, the thing that we really had to educate ourselves on was, um, looking at current head count. So what is our current head count? What is the current roll-up of our head count in 2017 and beyond? More importantly, what is our projected growth? So what are we projecting as far as student growth? And then our building capacity. Every one of our, our buildings are built just a little bit different, so the capacity is a little bit different. Inglemore, for example, is your smallest footprint, um, in comparison to your other three high schools. And that was because Inglemore was remodeled in the 90s versus the last three high schools are going to be built in the last 10 years. So that was the one thing that we really had to take a look at. I think the thing that, um, we've been trying to share with our folks is that, um, you know, the draft recommendations are coming from a larger committee. It's coming from a lot of community members, as well as some, uh, some district staff. We spent many, many, many hours really diving into the details and, um, really looked at many, many different options, um, of moving, uh, boundaries or kids, or how do we get kids, as Larry talked about, to the southeast of our district? And some of our options looked at busing. That was one of the options that we looked at. But as we looked back at our themes, we knew that, um, from a community perspective, busing was not an option. We also know that based on the locations of many of our schools, we wanted to keep our school in the boundary that they're going to. And many of our schools are bordering one of our boundaries, either our south boundary or east boundary or our west boundary. We also know that in 2017, this is really just a milestone. We're going to be growing. We know we're going to have changes. We know that there's going to be bigger birth cohorts coming through. We know that there's going to be more housing development coming through. And we know that we're going to have to make sometime a change at some point in time. We did this in 2006. We knew that that change in 2006 was about a five-to-seven-year plan. We lucked out that the economic changes went, took a downturn. And now we're sort of at that place where, um, we are overcapacity in many of our schools. We know that we also have two separate issues that we're trying to balance out there. One is the overcrowding in some of our schools. We also know that in parts of our district, we have very low enrollment. So if you look at the schools south or east of the urban growth boundary, we know that we have a lot of capacity in that area. And then the other thing that we're trying to, um, share with the community is that the service area that we change does not always equate the density. So if you look at the density in, in some of the western part of the U G A versus the eastern part, it may look like Alaska and only have as many people as Alaska. All right, so here's our draft proposals that we're sharing. Know that 18 of our 20 schools will have some type of impacts at the elementary level. So as you can see, this is our current boundary. We tried to draw the line where King Snohomish County line would be, and then the urban growth line. And as we shared, anything east of our urban growth line is really small elementary schools. Anything north of our King Snohomish line are really large elementary schools. The goal for us was really looking at, how do we continue to move kids south and east to balance up the district? For example, if you look at Fernwood, if we don't do this plan, the projected, um, enrollment at Fernwood is about 1,200 elementary kids. And as, as we shared, if you continue to look at just the, the placement of many of our schools, how do you move kids from, in the Crystal Springs service area, south, without moving them past Crystal Springs? And in essence, it become busing. And that's what we were trying to avoid. All right? We also know that one of the luxuries we had is we have a district site, the Maltby site, located luckily in the right area. So that's one of the things that we're looking at in the future of how to build additional capacity to offset some of the growth, continued growth that we're seeing in the north end part of our district. We know that at the middle school service areas, six of the six middle schools will change. So this is our current, um, service area for middle schools. And this is the new change that we'll have. As you can see, we, we're balancing this up a little bit better between the seven-plus and 900 students. And that we know, when you add a fourth high school, we'll know we'll have to impact all three of our high schools. So your current service area for Woodinville, Botha, and Inglemore. And what's significant about this, if you look at the Woodinville service area, it takes 10 elementaries right now to feed into one high school. The other 10 elementaries are split between Botha and Inglemore. 2017 is a transition year, and it's a transition year because at the new high school, it's only going to be a 9-11 grade. 2018 then normalizes, where it's somewhere about 15, 1,500 students is what we're looking for. Now, what, what's significant about this is that we are only looking at residents. It doesn't include big programs. So for example, we know that in I B, there's about, at Inglemore, there's about 300 to 350 students who attend some of the I B programs that we have out there. Where some of our other programs, we know that the waiver process, we may have about 100 students in the waiver process for some of our specialty programs in the high school level.
So said it, said it a different way. We have waivers, um, students who attend a school other than their resident area school all across our district. But when we look at our three existing high schools, right now, Inglemore's net in that students who may leave Inglemore to attend a school elsewhere versus students who come into Inglemore is about 200 to 250 students, um, greater than the net at our other schools. And so these are, these numbers here reflect only residents. We presume that that waiver pattern will continue into the future, and so consequently, the numbers at the other schools will likely be lower, and Inglemore's number will be higher when the, when the impact of waivers is factored, is laid over the top of that, if that makes sense.
So this is just another way to show you the estimated impacts at the K-5 elementary. So of your 9,700 kids, we'll probably be moving around 1,100, um, elementary kids. And at the middle school, of your roughly 5,000, middle school 6-8, will be moving roughly 700 of those kids. Go ahead, Doug.
Back up just a little bit, if you wouldn't mind. So this gives a more comprehensive view of the 1,100 students at the elementary level. And so you can see on the, on the left-hand side, those would be students, um, current service area. And then in the draft plan, it gives a sense of scale of where those students under the draft plan would be going to, so that, um, what you can hopefully gather from this is, when you look district-wide, this is a very large transition that's occurring across our entire district, impacting a great number of school communities.
So the 30 between Kenmore Elementary and Arrowhead, what, what does that mean?
So that means that there are, let me see if I find it right there. There are 30 students right now who currently attend Kenmore Elementary who, under the, K-5, uh, who, at Kenmore Elementary, that under this proposed plan would transition to Arrowhead Elementary. And likewise, if you look down below, there are 90 students, um, at Shelton View that would be moving to Kenmore Elementary, and approximately 70 from...
Forty.
Forty from West Hill to Kenmore.
Forty from West Hill, I'm sorry, who would, who would similarly be coming in to Kenmore under this plan.
What we're not showing on here is some of the projections as we look out to 2021. This is our, just our current kids that will be impacted in our system today.
This is a similar look at the, um, the junior high impacts. Again, um, where students are currently attending to where the proposed plan would move them to. Much of this tracking the changes that take place at the elementary level.
And same for your high school. So this is going to be a little bigger change, given that we're building a new high school. So it's about 1,600 students that would be moving. As you can see, Botha High School will be a big one, where roughly about 800 students will be moving from Botha High School to North Creek. And Inglemore to Botha. So as I've shared earlier, one of the, the challenges that I think... So as I've shared earlier, one of the, the challenges that I think the EDTF had was trying to fit six middle schools, trying to keep the same feeder pattern into four high schools. Right now, it's a pretty easy fit. You have six junior highs, and so it's pretty easy to just move each, two junior highs into each one of our high school feeder patterns. As you look at the model for that we're proposing, it becomes a little bit more challenging in how we split that. And part of the split is the current enrollment that we know today, including any future or projected students we know that will be coming down the road or in the pipeline. So part of our recommendation to the school board will be to consider the proposed draft changes. And right now, they're in draft. We're going through some community open houses, gathering information and input from the, the committee, and we'll take that back to our committee to process and review. We also know that, given some of the continued growth that we're seeing in the north end, that we are going to recommend that we build a new facility on the Maltby site. That would be tied to the two thousand and eighteen bond. And that we continue to further analyze the eastern part of our district, given some of the smaller schools we have with the following unknowns, you know, thirteen fifty-one as far as what happens with K-three class size. Thirteen fifty-one is a, is to reduce class size at the K-three level. We also know that in two thousand seventeen, we have to implement full-day kindergarten, which was a legislative change. And we also know that in the next five to ten years, both King and Stahomish could move their urban growth line further east of our district. So as I've shared earlier, we've already done two of the open houses at Woodinville and Bothell. We have three more, two this week, Skyview and Inglemore, and then we have a fifth one at Woodmore. With a final recommendation, hopefully, at least a, a draft recommendation presented to the board sometime in April.
So the process at this point will be the feedback and input that we're receiving at the open houses. We'll go back to the EDTF. They'll process that and determine if there should be any adjustments in the plan that makes sense from that feedback. Obviously, it's, any adjustments have to fit into the system-wide changes that need to take place to meet our needs across the district. That will then get incorporated into a draft recommendation that will formally come to the board in April. And we'll then spend the next year continuing to study enrollment trend data, housing starts, trying to get as smart as we can, as far into the future as we can, about where we see population growth occurring across the district. I wouldn't anticipate, though, that there will be significant changes in the recommendation that comes to the board in April, unless there are significant changes in the underlying assumptions that we learn of over the next year that would cause us to rethink those. There may be some, some tweaking at the edges, but I wouldn't anticipate that in two thousand, spring of two thousand and sixteen, there will be a whole different plan than, than what is presented this April. Our goal and intent, and what the board has, has approved as a timeline, is they will make a final boundary adjustment, they will approve a final boundary adjustment plan in the spring of two thousand and sixteen, so that as we head into the two thousand and sixteen-seventeen school year, which will be our last school year before we open up North Creek, implement the boundary adjustments, and implement grade reconfiguration, that everyone in the community has a full year of advance notice of, of where they will be going with respect to this plan, and we can focus that year on transition planning to both welcome new members into new school communities, as well as to gracefully transition members out of school communities into new school communities. And we welcome your questions.
Thank you. Let's go down the line. Councilmember Smith, then Councilmember Curtis.
Well, thank you, first of all, for being here tonight. I know this wasn't a, a, a long-term planned event for you, and I really appreciate you taking the time to come out and explain this and educate us a little bit, and I think it's, it's a worthwhile process. When I look at the data, it's clear, one thing for me, there's, there's no way I have the ability to look at it and say, "You're wrong," or "This should be changed," or this or that. It's, it's a lot of work, and I see there's a lot of data here. And so I really appreciate the work the EDTF has put into this, because it's, it's, I can see there's a lot here. So because I can't really comment on the data and how that can be manipulated or changed, I just want to talk or have some comments on record with regards to what Inglemore is to the community. And, and it's something, it's, it's not in the data. It's, it's totally intangible, and it, part of it rests with the fact that as a city, we've only been a city for fifteen years. And when my wife and I moved here in eighty-seven, one of the first things we realized is there's no, there's no civic center, there's no, there's no downtown, really, Kenmore at the time. And we're slowly getting there. And, and what this does, it, it, it hurts because it tears apart a part of what Kenmore is. And, and it's something that, you know, I just don't have the answer for, and, and I wish I did, because I could give you something to work on, and, and I'd love to give you a solution. But I think what, it's, it's painful, because we don't have the history of a, of a Bothell or a Woodinville, where you have these established communities that are more readily identifiable. Inglemore is identified with Kenmore, and Kenmore really identifies with Inglemore. And so all's I would ask is that as you go forward and you take the comments, if there's anything you can do to, to consider how that impacts the long-term success for the families and the children that go up through the system to be part of, identified with a community, realize that there is some importance there and, and real value in the health of the child. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Councilmember Curtis.
Mine are just kind of high-level thoughts. I like the fact that your decisions are being made based on data. I like the short and the long-term thinking. I think the process was very deliberative with a lot of community involvement, and it moved from the policy-level decisions down to the details. There isn't a perfect solution. And your team has worked really hard to come up with a solution, and it sounds like you're at least listening to the public, and hopefully, you know, there will be some room for some minor tweaking, but obviously, everything you move here has some consequence somewhere else. So thank you for coming out and listening tonight.
Thank you.
Councilmember Danuski.
Hi, I also wanted to say thank you for coming out. I know it, it means a lot to us, and it means a lot to the community as well. I'm going to be, you know, with everyone. I obviously don't know all the data, and I obviously don't know much of the data, but I've looked at a little, and it, for the two thousand and seventeen numbers, it, it looks like Inglemore would be at about thirteen hundred students, which is sixty-one percent capacity, where Bothell would be at eighteen hundred students, which is eighty-one percent capacity, which leaves kind of an extra five hundred and fifty-eight students that, if, if this data is correct, that may actually, there may be some room at Inglemore to maybe tweak around the edges of Kenmore Elementary. I know that we've, about two hundred kids would need to go up that direction. I do a lot of social service with Kenmore Elementary, and I'll just say, they've got really strong support systems in their community, especially the Latino and Russian communities. And to kind of break them up at the junior high, I, I don't think that would be a, a great thing to do, if, if it's possible to avoid that, especially since out of all the Kenmore Junior High kids, there's only going to be one little tiny pocket now that would go to the high school. So if there's any way that the whole elementary school could feed up that way, I don't know. I think it'd, I'd love it if we could look at that at least.
Thank you. And I would just reiterate again that the thirteen hundred figure that shows for Inglemore reflects resident area students only. We anticipate that that, in reality, will be a much larger number, since Inglemore currently captures a much larger number of students who, who choose to waive into the school from outside the attendance area.
Which is about two hundred, right?
It, it, the, the net difference between waivers in and out at Inglemore compared to Bothell and Woodinville is about two to two hundred and fifty more students who come into Inglemore than leave compared to the other schools.
Okay.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Again, I echo everybody else. Thanks for sharing all this with us as a council. And I too consider Inglemore to be Kenmore's high school. There's Bothell High School, there's Woodinville High School, and Inglemore is Kenmore High School. And Kenmore Elementary and Kenmore Junior High have funneled into Kenmore High School all these years. And we also, at Inglemore, have students coming from, all the way from English Hill to, to Inglemore. And, and why not divert those students that are over there and keep the Kenmore students together? The other question I had was, I think I heard you say there are only two elementary schools where the cohort is being split, Kenmore and somebody else. And what's the logic of picking on Kenmore?
Well, he's looking for that. I'll answer the sunrise question. The, the English Hill is our Sunrise Elementary. When I first came on the board in two thousand and six, we were in the middle of boundary changes then as well. And we did move Sunrise to Timbercrest and then feeding into Woodinville High School, so that the people that come from that area are wavering into the Inglemore IB program or Inglemore High School.
Okay.
So if you go back to the slides, and first of all, I'd say it's, there's no intent to pick on Kenmore. But if you look at the, our current configuration, this three, it doesn't have a page number on it, but...
Toward the end.
Toward the end of the slide. We currently have a couple of elementary schools, Shelton View and, and Kokony, that have similar splits, and it's, I think, simply a, a function of trying to put an overall plan together. So when you look at the proposed splits, Kenmore, Crystal Springs, and Hollywood Hill then are, 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 are three elementary schools that would end up as splits in this particular plan. Although Hollywood Hill, while it will split at middle school, those students will then be reunited again back at high school. So no intentional desire to pick on Kenmore in any way. I think it's just the way that the plan has come together.
Yeah. Which school split, we basically came down to geography.
Pardon me?
Which school split basically came down to geography, where they were located within the district?
Okay. Yeah. My, my two children, when we were in Arrowhead, left Arrowhead. Twenty-eight students out of Arrowhead went to Kenmore Junior High, and all the rest six graders went to North Shore. They all came back together to Inglemore, though.
Right. Correct.
They made additional friends and then came back together.
Right.
Councilmember Sperry.
Well, thank you. As you can see, this is an issue, you know, general policy is one thing, but when it affects your family and your street and your relationships that you've developed over time, it's obviously a very dear and painful, you know, thing for some people to have a change. There are a couple of things. One is my personal story. My husband was actually one of the first graduates of Inglemore. He graduated in nineteen sixty-eight, and my two kids graduate, or went there too. And when I went with, I, I, I moved around a lot, so I didn't have the time to, or didn't have the chance to develop those long-term relationships. So my husband went to Kenmore Elementary, they moved across to Arrowhead, he went to Kenmore Junior High, and he went to Inglemore. And I went with my husband to these reunions, and, you know, thirty years later, they're talking about the Boy Scout troops that they did, and this happened and that happened. And, you know, I still run into this, people that work at Ostrom. So these are lifelong relationships, and I understand that you have to balance the numbers, but I would urge that if there's some way of, you know, not creating that split, you know, in Kenmore Elementary, I think, I think it's really worth it. The other things that you heard a lot here tonight is, it is a very unique school. I mean, we think it's the best because it's in Kenmore, but, you know, it has a diverse economic situation. And so in, in a sense, you know, those are the kids who need the support, they need the, the cohorts, and they need that continuity. So I do appreciate you coming, and I certainly hope that there will be some, some room to, to edit that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Herbig.
So it's kind of an offhand remark that I made here two weeks ago that got this whole thing going and got you guys out here. I appreciate you coming out here and making this presentation. I know it's a little uncomfortable, and I hope we're not making it anywhere, you know, I hope that we're being cordial enough with you.
Absolutely.
I do have, so you said that about two hundred and fifty folks net kind of waiver into Inglemore, and so it's obvious that Inglemore is kind of the high school that's really in demand in the area. So I just want to make sure that you guys understand why people feel hurt. A lot of folks do choose where they're going to live based on that high school. And I'm lucky, I live, I happen to have bought on the correct side of the street. But my daughter, who's going to Kenmore Elementary, her and her friends are going to be split up when they make it to high school, and that's going to be hard to have to explain to her. So I just hope that beyond, that you can look beyond the data a little bit and look at those personal relationships, and look at the emotions that are involved too, because this, this is going to really affect Kenmore quite a bit. I understand this is a tough decision. I'm glad I'm not the one that has to make it. And I know you guys are doing a great job. I appreciate everything you guys do, but I hope there's some solution that can be found to keep the Kenmore Elementary cohort together, because I think it's really important. These friendships that folks make when they're seven last a lifetime. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I, I, I come from, I think, a little different perspective, in that when Mrs. Gillette was talking about her son, I remember, I got split up from my elementary school. I never saw the kids from my elementary school again after I moved on to junior high school, and I never recovered. I mean, I never made it. I think a lot of you know that I'm a high school dropout. I mean, I just, I just barely made it out of junior high school. So when I hear about friends, I grew up in South Central LA, and so it was like Mrs. Gillette was saying, friends and classmates have her kids back. I mean, it's sort of, I lost that support system. Nobody had my back when, when I moved on. And so I hear about things like that, and it goes back to my childhood, and I start thinking about the things that I went through. And so I, I get a little bit protective about it. So, I mean, I think there's a lot to be said when you think of Kenmore. When I think about Kenmore, when I'm off lobbying for Kenmore and, and meeting different people in different parts of the country, I mean, it's Inglemore High School. Our kids go to Inglemore High. It's Kenmore High. That's, I mean, the first, one of the first things I did when I got elected back in two thousand and four was we got the reader board installed. We, we passed that, what was, we needed to change our sign code to allow that reader board to go in, and, you know, it was, it was for our high school. So I, I guess I, I'm, I, I just feel kind of strongly that anything you guys, I know the data, as you're working with the data, and I really appreciate the dilemma that you're in. I just, I think of Kenmore and I think of Inglemore High School, and I'm really proud of that school. And, you know, and, and some of the other things that I've been hearing, and maybe you can dispel some of this, and maybe you can't, is the boundary lines. Kenmore Elementary is such a diverse school, and it is the highest percentage of poverty in the school, in the entire North Shore school system. And to have that network broken up, I mean, there's potential there for, for a lot of damage to the, to the kids, and, and, you know, I know none of it's intentional. But, I mean, you, you sort of form friendships and reliances, and so I, I've never really seen where the boundaries are. I don't, I don't know that anybody has. I, my understanding is that the, like the trailer park right next door is where one of the boundaries is. So I'm, I'm a little concerned that, you know, that we take a look at that socioeconomic component of it and, and try to be as fair as I know you guys are. So it's a tough job.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Braker.
But those are my concerns.
We did bring a set of more detailed maps that encompass every service area in the school district. They're a bit more readable as far as looking at major roads, and I left a copy with the city manager, and so I would...
Thank you.
Certainly welcome you to take a look at those. And as far as the demographics, while the, the work that's been done to this point has really focused on more... focused on, more on geography and school capacity, we are doing the analysis of overlaying the demographics of this proposed draft boundary plan compared to the current demographics of our school communities. And what I can say is, at least on a preliminary basis, what we're seeing in Kenmore is that it would not become a more diverse or a more needy school, it would actually move slightly in the opposite direction, when you look at the populations that the plan would move to different school communities, as well as the new populations that would join Kenmore. So, it's little solace, I understand, as far as your major concerns about Kenmore in a sense of community, but it is not taking our most challenged school and making it more challenged.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Councilmember Herbig.
So I'm looking at the number of students who'll be shifting high schools in twenty seventeen, and I see that thirty-seven kids will be moving into Inglemore, but four hundred and sixty will be moving out of Inglemore, leaving, I mean, that's four hundred and twenty-seven net loss to Inglemore. What's the thought process for that? Because it sounds, you talk a lot about waivers and making sure there's a lot of waivers for IB, but is the thought process to make Inglemore more of kind of a magnet school for IB, and make that kind of the main draw to Inglemore, and make it less of a community school, and to draw more from all over the district? Or is there some other, is there something else going on there?
No, I think Inglemore already is a magnet school in the districts, and I would probably defer to Katrina on this one, but I would say that the current numbers at Inglemore don't reflect, these reflect resident area enrollment. And so already, Inglemore's population is much greater than its resident area enrollment. So I believe the plan is crafted to allow Inglemore to maintain the capacity that would allow it to continue to serve a large number of students from outside its service area.
Right, but it looks like you're taking out four hundred and twenty-seven residents, you know, you changed the boundary, so there's four hundred and twenty-seven less kids going there. Is it thought to make that up with IB waivers, or?
Not to make it entirely up, but to have capacity, to continue to allow, as we do now, folks from across the district, as well as from outside the district, who might be attracted to the International Baccalaureate Program to access that at Inglemore.
I also think what you're not seeing on here is, there's going to be some growth happening in the Inglemore service area.
Oh, okay.
So as we showed with you on some of the permitting process that we're seeing, there's going to be a pipeline of kids coming through beyond twenty twenty-one.
Okay. Thanks.
And I would just add that North Shore, in general, has just long had a policy that allows waivers to all of our schools, and there are unique programs at each of our schools that students from across the district access. So, there's students from within the Inglemore service area that access Bothell and Woodinville High School programs as well.
Correct.
One thing to note on that map, so instead of drawing three grade levels from each of those high school service areas, you will be drawing four grade levels. So that's why each of the high school service areas need to get smaller, because you're drawing more people from the same area. Because you're going from a three-year to a four-year high school.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We really appreciate the opportunity.
We appreciate your coming out here and talking with us.
And we appreciate your love of all things Kenmore and Inglemore.
I know.
Thank you for your time.
Well, that we do.
Yeah, and I guess you'll be there Thursday, right? Thursday for the open house, or the team will be?
There will be Wednesday and Thursday.
Wednesday and Thursday, I believe. Wednesday we're at Skyview, Thursday from six to eight PM, we'll be in Inglemore High School.
Okay. Thank you.
Spanish-speaking forum, Monday at Woodmore Elementary, from six to eight PM as well.
Great. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the King Conservation District presentation of the two thousand and fifteen Program of Work Implementation Plan, and thank you for coming and talking to us tonight.
Am I on? There we go. Okay. So my name's Melissa Lang, I'm with King Conservation District, and I have spent the better part of the last year out talking to city councils, introducing and/or reacquainting you with King Conservation District. So as I'm, by way of introduction, for those that don't know, King Conservation District is part of the Conservation District, which is national, and we came out of the Dust Bowl days, and our goal is to build better ground, to help folks. And as our mission statement says up there, "We assist private landowners in King County to protect and enhance land, water, and food in rural and urban areas through education programs, technical assistance, and cost-share programs. And with this, we build better ground across the region." So as I said, we came out of the Dust Bowl era, we have just celebrated our sixty-fifth anniversary, but as the King County Council just voted to approve our Program of Work for two thousand and fifteen, they said this is, we're in a new era of Conservation District. Typically, the Conservation District has worked with rural communities, and while you will always be able to borrow a manure spreader from us, we realize, just as the previous presentation showed, our county is changing. We're becoming much more urban, and that's where we need to bring some of our services to the urban area. So, about twenty months ago, at the request of King County, there were two complementary committees formed, and that was the Conservation Panel and a Task Force. And through these panels, there were a hundred natural resource priorities identified, and of those hundred, there were six that were prioritized and determined that KCD, King Conservation District, was uniquely qualified to address. We were also tasked with the job of creating an advisory committee that would help us to create a program of work that we submitted to the King County Council on August first. So this advisory committee is made up of King County reps, folks from the city of Seattle and Bellevue, Sound Cities Association folks, rural and urban landowners, and then also representatives who were talking to us about equity and social justice. So, we worked with those folks with a very rigorous schedule. We met sometimes two and three times a month, and came up with our Program of Work. And Seattle, or Sound Cities Association, on July ninth, through their PIC committee, voted to approve that, went to their council, and they approved it. And then also on August, or on November seventeenth, it went before the Metro King County Council, and they voted eight to zero, we call that unanimous, to approve. So, from there, we developed the implementation plan, and that you have a copy of in your packet. And it is a five-year implementation plan, and it outlines an additional three million dollars with a new investments around regional natural resource management priorities. We're currently working with the same advisory committee to develop guidelines and criterias for how we'll be using that money for the new programs. We will be continuing with our existing programs. So as I said, there were six major areas that were identified, and those can be further consolidated into three areas. We'll be expanding the region's green infrastructure, as the earlier public comment was made about city trees. We'll be working with cities to help enhance and maintain city trees on both public and private property. We'll be working with rural farmers to help build a sustainable and equitable and resilient food system, also within the cities, helping city dwellers to be able to grow food whenever and wherever they can. And then also helping to restore our private shorelines, both fresh and marine. I'm sorry, I'm not moving my slides forward, am I? So here we go. So in the forestry area, for, in the rural part of that, we will be working with folks who have property of five acres or less. King County has programs that help landowners with more property than that, but we will be working particularly with that group, because they don't have the support. And within the urban areas, as I said, working with individual private landowners to both maintain and enhance urban trees, and then also with cities around the regional food system. An interesting statistic is that of the six hundred million dollars of raw foods consumed in King County, King County farmers only produce a hundred and twenty million of that. So there is a large amount of food that we bring from outside, that there is the opportunity to have our King County farmers being able to provide. We'll also be working with small to medium-sized farmers to help overcome the obstacles that keep them from being able to bring food, improving storage facilities, production, distribution, and marketing opportunities, helping them to try and get into the institutional markets. As far as shorelines and riparian habitat, we know that over two-thirds of King County marine and freshwater shoreline is owned by private landowners. So if we want to make a significant difference, we have to engage private landowners in making those changes. And we do that through one-on-one technical assistance, project implementation, workshops, and classes. So our traditional services, we will continue to offer. We offer free soil testing. Every King County resident within the district has up to five free soil samples available, and they can access that on our website, kingcd.org. We coordinate volunteer coordination, and I know there was a great project here in Kenmore last year, along the Swamp Creek, where we did work. We have cost-share programs, we call it landowner incentive, where we work with landowners to help pay for habitat restoration in aquatic areas, and also some stormwater issues around livestock and water. We do workshops, we have jurisdictional grants for our member jurisdiction, and we offer technical assistance. So, I come here and ask how King Conservation District can help Kenmore, meet the goals of providing your citizens access to local healthy food, vibrant and urban, and rural forest canopy, and improved water quality. So I wanted to call your attention to a couple of things that I had in the packet. We, on Saturday, and it looks like the weather's going to be great, we have a native bare-root plant sale happening down in our Renton parking lot, so people can come down there. They'll, we are, the pre-sale has closed, but there will be walk-up sales, and we'll also be having a community fair with a lot of great folks out there giving great information. Also in your packet are fact sheet and the intake sheet for the free soil testing, and this is something if copies, you wanted to make copies and make that available out for your community booth, that would be great. There's also a couple of sheets here talking about different workshops that we're offering. We have a mud, manure, and pasture management series coming up in March, that is great, I've been to that myself. And then some group volunteer opportunities. We have an election coming up for one of our board of supervisors, so there's some information there. And then on the other side of your packet, I wanted to call attention to a funding sheet that we have. As I mentioned, one of the programs that we have is jurisdictional grant money. If you look on the backside, Kenmore has about a hundred thousand dollars in jurisdictional grant money available, so we would love to work with you. I know some cities will save that up, because they have the money earmarked for maybe a larger-scale project, so, but we would like to work with you guys to help you determine how to spend that. So, this shows you just some of the member jurisdictional grant money that you've spent in the past, some conservation services that we've worked with. And then, a couple of years ago, someone in Kenmore accessed our landowner incentive program by doing some roof runoff management, a project there, and we helped pay for that. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and otherwise.
Councilmember Smith.
Yeah, thank you for coming in and going through some of this stuff. I have a question on the soil testing. Do most people, do they have it tested for just the pH and to try to figure out what would grow, or are they, do you also test it specifically if somebody thinks they have contamination and that's, and then I guess the follow-up to that is sort of, if there is contamination, and then all of a sudden, somebody, and it's tested, does it get recorded with the county, or how does that, what happens with that if it turns out that there's contaminants in the soil?
So the purpose that we have in soil testing is for soil fertility. So, it's a water quality issue as well as a soil fertility issue. So we want people to amend their soil based on an educated understanding of what their soil is made up of. So yes, there's